Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 9th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We have seven members present, non-absent. Can we have a roll call vote? Mr. Collins? Just say yes.
I'm present.
We're doing a roll call.
Dr. Harrell?
To start the meeting.
Here.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Miss Bastido?
Present.
Mrs. Stufen?
Present.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mrs. Eubner?
Here. Seven members present, non-absent. Okay, let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for public comments, we have Jean Dorner.
My name is Jean Dorner. It's approaching a year during which I have complained about this board meeting in closed session under the exception of setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. The description of price has been explained to me by a board member, and lately the District 205 attorneys have written an extended definition of price and have sent it to me. I'm not complaining about the board meeting in closed session to determine a price for the southwest corner of the Bryan Middle School property. I am saying that there should be a discussion at the board table about whether to sell the property. I've heard more than one board member grumble about decisions that past boards have made that have had negative impact on this board, so don't do the same for a future board. If this property is sold and a future board should decide to put an addition on Bryan, the loss of those square feet of green space will require District 205 to build more water detention when using any more than a few square feet of green space. This board, the seven of you, owes the community a discussion at the board table of why you think that selling this property is such a good idea.
Other public comments? We'll move on to Capitol Hill Challenge, Stock Market Game, right from York High School.
I'm going to first read the proclamation and then make an observation. Whereas the Securities Industry and Financial Markets Association, referred to as CIFMA, Foundation's Stock Market Capitol Hill Challenge, is an exciting national financial education competition for junior high and high schools that reaches all 50 states and their members of Congress. And whereas the CHC matches members of Congress with students, teachers, and schools competing in the stock market game in their respective district or state, and whereas student teams manage a hypothetical $100,000 online portfolio and invest in real stocks, bonds, and mutual funds, with the top 10 CHC teams earning a trip to Washington, D.C., to meet their member of Congress and to be recognized at an awards reception on Capitol Hill. And whereas during their visit, students and teachers meet with business, government, and education leaders to learn about fiscal policymaking, the role of the capital markets, and global economic trends, as well as having the opportunity to tour financial landmarks and national monuments. And whereas, from February to May of 2016, during their junior year, Rachel Doyle and Gina Santucci made the investing decisions that led to their team finishing ninth in the country out of 4,288 teams, with a final total equity of $147,502.77, or a 41.477% rate of return. Whereas, while the team was unable to meet with Senator Mark Kirk, he made the following statement about their accomplishments. "Learning how to invest and manage finances at a young age is crucial to making successful financial decisions in adulthood. My 401K legislation teaches children the power of small investment. I am impressed by Gina and Rachel's understanding of financial education and congratulate them on this outstanding accomplishment. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, to their parents, and to the faculty chair of the York Business Department, Jim Burrell, for these outstanding achievements." Now for, this is what I do for a living. And the academic research shows that 80% of all actively managed portfolios by professional money managers underperform passive investments like index funds. And the fact that in three months, you two created a 41% rate of return is pretty remarkable. The other remarkable thing is that statistically, I would guess that we'd be seeing Mr. Burrell and his team once every few years, maybe once every decade at the most. But Jim Burrell brings team after team to these national competitions, and year after year comes home a winner, which I think is a testament to what's being taught in the York Business Department and at York High School in general. So my congratulations, Mr. Burrell. To Rachel, to Gina, congratulations.
We'll hear about our Administrator Academy.
Good evening and thank you. Want to share with you an update on how we got the year off the ground last week. On Monday, we had an in-house Administrator Academy. By law, every administrator in the state has to do an Administrator Academy every year, and we do ours in-house to try to build our consistency with what our priorities are at any given time. And this year, the Administrator Academy was facilitated by Rich Volz of the Illinois Association of School Administrators. He has been doing this for a period of several years now, working on bringing people up to speed with the Danielson Frameworks, which is what we use for our evaluation system. And what he's learned, and what Charlotte Danielson would say, is that 3C, engaging students in learning, is the most important aspect of that framework, and that if you focus on that, it essentially drives effectiveness in all the rest of the areas of the framework. And so we talked a lot about student engagement, did a lot of work with some interator reliability, looking at vignettes of teachers, and had some very good discussion around that. But what we also were trying to do was use that as a platform to launch into our future work for the rest of this year. And so the next day, when we had our Administrator Workshop, we did some work to start with by taking a look at professional learning communities and making sure that we were reinforcing how our work is embedded in those concepts. And in particular, we took a look at some of the work on the cultural shifts that need to be evident in professional learning communities. And so actually, can you flip up the one that, the cultural shifts one? So there's a more extensive handout that's included in the board documents. This is a slide that's going to be shown at the opening institute days coming up when I address the faculty. But essentially, the primary shift is to focus on what's learned as opposed to what's taught, with a real emphasis of focusing on culture over structure. And the cultural, the essence of the cultural belief is the belief that, the true belief that all students can learn. And so when we talk about raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students, we laid a lot of these foundational things last year. And what we wanted to do is we sat down and we said, "How do we operationalize that? What do we mean by that?" So we developed some belief statements, and you can go back to the other slide, about what do we truly mean, what does raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students truly mean? And these are the belief statements that we came together as a team. And we were very intentional about some of the words that we chose. So we used the word must, we included the word growth, we talked about shared responsibility, meaning the concept that we're going from my students to our students, and owning the learning of all students collectively as a team, and ensuring that we had some statements in there that reflect the fact that we're a learning organization and that our decision-making is based on the needs of students. And so our principals will go back and work with their teachers when they talk about their school improvement plans and their work in their buildings, to try to bring these things to life and come to some type of an understanding of what does this mean for us as we work with our students, trying to help our students learn and grow, and what do we need to do to affect improvement and growth? Now, we moved on from there to really kind of tie the things together with the idea of student engagement. We showed a TED Talk from Ken Robinson, "How to Escape Education's Death Valley," and we really tried to talk about student engagement and rigor and future-ready learning really being tied up in the same idea. And so if you could go to that rigor relevance framework, this framework comes from the Model Schools Conference that you've heard us all talking about. And when we define rigor, we chose as our definition last year, application and knowledge to real-world unpredictable situations as our definition of rigor. So we've kind of been working under this, but we're trying to dig deeper into this and get people to understand that rigor isn't just about making things harder or piling additional homework on students, but it's really a much larger concept than that. And so if you look at quadrant A, quadrant A on that framework, and we're going to get in to this a little bit more, we want to talk with you about these concepts over time. But quadrant A is typically what's on standardized tests, and it's more factual dissemination of content types of knowledge. And typically, what schools do when they increase rigor is they move up into quadrant C. But quadrant C, a lot of times typically, is within the context of school and content. And you don't get into the true college and career-ready types of concepts if you stay in A and C. So going to B and D is really what we're trying to do in terms of pushing our instruction. Some instruction is necessary in all of those quadrants, but instruction in B and D is typically not as prevalent as it needs to be. And so we're going to try to have some conversations about how do we move into quadrants B and D more consistently. And we want to tie the instructional coaches, the instructional rounds, the school improvement plans, the student achievement objectives, the teacher evaluation systems, all of these things together, so that they're all part of a larger conversation and they're not in isolation and compartmentalized. And so what I wanted to give you to kind of segue into the next presentation is just talk about what we did last week, kind of just in summary form. But then, in Student Achievement Objective 2, you'll see that there's some language in there reflected where we talk about piloting some systems for helping teachers figure out how to structure their classrooms to get at higher levels of student engagement. And the Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures is one of those systems. And we sent several principals to a conference, and they came back extremely enthused about what this could mean for transforming our classrooms. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn this over to Gina Polgrieder, the Churchville principal, Peter Cunningham, the assistant principal at Churchville, Leslie Weber, who is the Jefferson principal, and Kathleen Tome, who is the Lincoln principal. Tammy Poole, the field principal, attended but has a conflict tonight, helped with some of the planning but could not be here tonight.
It was called Kagan Engagement, right? All right. So while they're getting ready, "Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to share our excitement for how we can help support more learning for both our students and our staff. This summer, as Dr. Moyer shared, Peter, Gina, Leslie, Tammy, and I attended the Kagan Conference, where we were introduced to structures which promote high levels of authentic engagement for all, increased learning, and reduce student achievement gaps. Now, as a district, we have talked about and included engagement and reducing the achievement gap into our improvement plans over the past few years. Now, we have a new tool to help our teachers achieve these goals. Dr. Moyer has discussed our moral imperative as educators, is raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students. We cannot do this without changing how we teach. Throughout our time at the conference, we came to understand simple tweaks all teachers can implement, which will drastically improve student engagement and increase learning for all. Gina and Peter are going to lead an exercise to show that we can change how we teach, not what we teach. We're not looking to change curriculum here, but how we teach to promote more student
Don't look so nervous. We're professionals.
Dr. Moyer, will you help out?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes. If you two could sit there. This is going to be a short...
Yes, very short. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. Really appreciate that. We did come back really excited to do this, to present what we've learned about. And one way to really kind of differentiate what we're talking about here with the cooperative structures is really look at kind of the three major, we're going to generalize here, the three major types of teachers. So we're just going to kind of illustrate what that kind of teaching style would be. So I'll start with Teacher A, and this is not going to be difficult. The question today that we're going to do for all three is, "What are you most excited for this coming year?" That's the question. So I'm going to be Teacher A first. You guys are the students, you guys are the class. So my question for you guys is, "What are you most excited for this coming year?" I'll give you a second, and then if someone can raise their hand and answer that for me, that'd be wonderful. I'm going to use wait time now. It is wide open. Yes, thank you.
I'll say, "Having my daughter make her selection and go into college."
Very exciting. Thank you for sharing. And so I respond, and that's it. Teacher A is done. So the question that we're looking at here is really what percentage of students are engaged in this type of classroom structure? So if you think about it, we've got, I think Dr. Moyer makes eight, so one-eighth of the class is engaged. The other seven really get to be passive, and the teacher's doing the work with one student. And many times, you find the habit is it's that same one or two students that are really stepping up, and the rest are breathing easy, right? Once one person raises their hand, okay, we're off the hook, and we can move on to Teacher B. So that's Teacher A. So moving to Teacher B, which would be kind of what you might consider group work in many classrooms, I'm going to ask the same question, and I'm just going to ask you guys to share with each other. So what are you most excited for this year? Go ahead and share with each other. Yes, now you're going to talk to each other, your group before. Thank you very much. That was actually really good. Thank you, guys, for sharing all that. You guys are really into it. I need you guys to be less engaged to really demonstrate this. You guys are really, yeah, you're really too, that's not really going to illustrate this well enough. No, I'm kidding. So in this same example, the percentage that we might see engaged in this, so if you've got a group of four, what percentage could we probably say we're guaranteed to have engaged in that? Does anybody want to wager a guess? Maybe half. I mean, can you guarantee, well, if one person's talking, can you guarantee everybody else is listening? So I think we can guarantee 25% in that. So again, we see the habit, somebody may be dominating, someone may be sinking back. So we can really only guarantee 25% for sure are participating. We can be strategic with our groups, but really, Teacher C, which, because that's the one that makes sense, the principal will do that, I'll do what's not to do. So Teacher C really will kind of illustrate where the Kagan structure comes in and what that engagement is. So I'll turn that over.
Okay, so Teacher C, one of our favorite quotes that we heard Dr. Kagan say at the conference was, "Why would we call on one when we can call on everyone?" It's really setting up a structure, and we learned at least 35 of them when we were there, to create a difference in how students practice. We're not changing the instruction. As you see, we're using the same question all the way through. Teachers can use the same questions they always have. It's changing how students practice. So Teacher C, we're going to add a structure to our group work that will dramatically increase student engagement. Okay? We're going to use the same question. We're going to add a structure called Timed Pair Share. And so I'm going to lead it off with, "What are you most excited about this year?" And I'm going to give you 15 seconds of silent time for you to think about it. Okay, and now you're going to share with your shoulder partner. Who's sitting next to you is your shoulder partner? But when I say go, because we are going to set it up where you will take turns, talking to your shoulder partner for 30 seconds, and on my cue, we will switch. And so your then-shoulder partner will respond to you with what they're most excited about. And the person with the longest hair will go first. Okay? Ready? Okay, now your shoulder partner has their turn. Okay, thank you. Let's bring it back. When you think about the difference, how many of your group were engaged? Everyone was engaged. So that is why we're going to talk about what the difference is between group work, where we thought we were doing amazing, engaging activities, versus cooperative learning. And the difference between group work and cooperative learning is pies. And Leslie will show us how pies is the game changer. Game changer.
No pressure here. So when you went through the different teachers, Teacher A, Teacher B, and Teacher C, the goal was to show you how Teacher A is kind of that person who is kind of the only one engaged in that conversation. Teacher B is something we typically do see. We see a teacher saying, "Okay, talk amongst yourselves." But when you really think about it, how many kids are actually engaged in that activity? And then when we had Teacher C, there was a set amount of time, a set task, and there was a certain structure we used to make sure that there was a higher percentage of student engagement. When we looked at all these structures and we were taught these structures at Kagan, one of the check kind of lists that we had to go through was, "Think about PIES," and it's a great acronym because everybody loves them. So what we had to look at was, the P is positive interdependence. So do students need each other to work? So this component ensures that students feel that they are on the same side and that they need each other to complete the discussion. So for example, if one member is doing well, does that benefit the other person? And after all, both members are done, is that task complete? So does one member need the other member to complete the task? In this instance, for Teacher C, they did, so we could say yes. The I is individual accountability. That piece is, students are not able to kind of hide in this setting, that they are, each person at some moment in the activity is accountable, and everyone must perform in front of everyone else. So it's that individual accountability piece. The E is equal participation. We've talked about it in two different ways, either time or turn. So some of our structures have the taking turns, where one person might take turns, or in our instance, with the structure we used, it was timed. It was 20 seconds for one person to talk and listen, and then that equal amount of participation was given to the other student. So that way, everyone had and felt equal in their participation in the discussion. Simultaneous interaction is the S, and if you think about it, what percent of students are active at one time? We went from Teacher A, where it was one out of eight, to Teacher B, where it was maybe 25%, because again, someone might have been hiding. Not everybody needed everybody to complete the task. And then you have Teacher C, where 50% was engaged at one time, if not 100%, because you were an engaged listener or you were an engaged, active speaker. So do you want to show them the little hand signals to remember pie? Do you guys remember?
Very cool. Elementary.
Oh, come on. So when we go through our checklist, the fun thing about it, and this is the way that we also incorporate, and we've done, I've done this with staff last year in my building. I taught Kagan, I used Kagan when I was a teacher. So the P stands for positive. So go ahead, positive. Interdependence. Okay, so positive interdependence. The I is individual accountability. All right? Come on, I didn't see it going, individual accountability. This is the fun one. This is the fun one. Okay? Equal, so you make the equal sign. Participation, so everyone's participating. And then the S is simultaneous, so you're coming in simultaneously. Interacting. So that was the acronym that we used in almost every structure, if not every structure, to really double-check to make sure, is it group work, or is it cooperative learning, and are the students engaged? So I want you to just reflect and think about Teacher A, and Teacher B, and Teacher C, and see how really this component of the strategies that we've used in the structures really helps ensure student engagement. And that is the goal, is we want to get students engaged. And as Dr. Moyer mentioned, that Danielson model, when we're looking and walking into classrooms, if students aren't engaged, how much are they really learning and walking away with? So thank you.
So as you can see, small tweaks to our instruction can have significant impacts to student learning and student engagement. We want this for our students, though we also want this for our staff. As we look ahead, Peter, Gina, Leslie, Tammy, and I are committed to integrating these structures into our staff meetings and professional development time with staff, as well as modeling strategies in the classroom. Through modeling, we will begin to introduce the power of these structures. We've also met with both Dr. Moyer and Ms. Baum to share our excitement and our desire to extend this training to others. We've discussed sending instructional coaches to training in September. Additionally, we are investigating other opportunities to provide training to classroom teachers and other administrators. We feel very strongly that these small changes to how we teach our students will have significant impact on helping all of us work together to achieve our moral imperative of raising the bar and closing the achievement gap for all students. Thank you for your support of the work we do. We appreciate it. Do you all have any questions? Come to our buildings and see it. We're really excited for this.
Chris?
A couple of main topics. One, and Chris, do you want to say anything about the refunding from a presentation standpoint? Elizabeth came and visited. She talked about interest rates, which fortunately are -- Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. I wasn't all set up here. I'm just putting my chair back. I know. We've got to go.
My mom.
So Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair came to the committee and gave us an update presentation on this refunding program that we've been doing for three years, four years now? And one of the things we want to look at, one is, the last slug of refunding is coming up, 90 days from January, which means that we can get rid of the issue bonds, I think in September, given where they'll close and how that works. And so we wanted to get an update on interest rates, but also revisit our assumptions one last time. As we took the savings, we'd always been taking the savings and using that to basically pay off our mortgage early. And the question was, is do we take some of those savings and spread them out a little longer to lower the overall tax rate over a longer period of time, at giving up some of the savings to do that, but lowering your payments, I guess, but paying it for a longer period of time? And given the structure of this current set of bonds, there's really not that much in term left on them. And so it worked out to very little difference between whether you used all the savings upfront and maximized savings to pay the bonds off early, or you tried to spread your payments over a little longer time and lower them. Because it's just, I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there's like six or seven years left, something like that? It wasn't --
Five years.
Five years. Okay. So I mean, you can see how there's just not a lot of room to change much as far as payment structure goes over five years. So what she has done is provided us on the agenda tonight, connected to that, is a parameters resolution. So every year we've done this, we've authorized a -- what is it, Chris? It's you, the Finance Committee, the Board President, to work --
That's the three.
Yeah, to work with William Blair at the right time to price the bonds. And so that's what's on here for review tonight. It won't be voted on tonight. It would be voted on next time, and I'll leave it to the Bond Council to take a look at that. And so I think the bottom line is, is we were going to proceed as we had planned on proceeding, and the last slug's coming up. So is there any questions on that part?
Chris, I would just say that we're bringing this out, you know, tonight as part of the committee report. We're expecting that we will have this on the agenda on the 23rd for approval. And then they would have their timeline in September, you know, to find out when they think they have the window that gives them the best, you know, best opportunity to pull the trigger, basically.
Yeah. So this is the same process we've used over the past several years when we've done this.
Chris, do you think you can provide some of the cumulative benefit to the community that kind of summarized that for some of the -- because it's been a program that's been going on for several years now to refinance the bonds as we're able to within the parameters of the laws?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just didn't have --
It started in May of 2012, and since then, it's been 12.6 million in savings to the district taxpayers to date.
And this last slug is the biggest slug, and then I'll have another, I think, 2 million on it now, which will get it to 14.
So what's the principal amount that you're refinancing?
22 million.
And that'll be issued in what structure? Four, five, one, five-term bonds, or a five-year bullet?
No, they're fitting into the existing debt service. So there'll be a ladder in maturity that follows the existing debt service payments, so they stay the same.
Okay. They'll just be low?
No, you just won't have the last one, or part of the last one.
All right.
That maximizes savings. So we're paying the bonds off earlier rather than over the same --
So you do four instead of five?
Something like, yeah. It really actually is just less than the last one than the normal.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think one of the questions, I mean, Elizabeth has volunteered to come talk to us again and go through the same PowerPoint she does every year when she does this. If you guys think that's worthwhile, I think we can have her come to the next meeting.
She is planning to be here.
She is.
At the next meeting.
Okay, good. Perfect. So that works. The second thing we talked about, we asked Chris to give us a flash report on the year-end June financials. And I don't want to front-run Chris, given that the next meeting, he's got a very detailed presentation about how the year ended up. I can give you the highlights. For some odd reason, we received over half the property taxes that we were due in our first payment. And Chris has followed up with the county and the township and gotten an answer that says, "I know the number looks weird, but it's the right number," which equates to, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million more than if we'd received the normal 48-point-something percent that we usually get. But outside of that quirk, we finished with a surplus. Chris will get into it at the next meeting. Anything else you want to add to that?
I'm going to do the recap of the year prior to the tentative budget presentation at the next board meeting.
Okay. Sure.
So you said we got more than we were expecting, but there's no reason to believe that the overall payment is going to be any more than we're expecting. Is that correct?
No, the difference will be collected in the fall.
Okay.
The quirk to that, though, is that the first payment's in this fiscal year, and the second payment's in the next fiscal year. So we get $2 million more this fiscal year, or we get $2 million less next fiscal year with the September payment.
Correct.
So that's something that Chris will have to address in the budget, and the end of the year versus the budget, and kind of how that timing difference works out through the whole thing.
Correct.
Because you'll probably, it'll subtract from whatever you were projecting for next fiscal year.
Right.
The -- all right, any other questions on that?
I have a question. And it's not directly tied to the Finance Committee, nor is it something that we need to decide on today. But I just want to go back to a meeting on, I believe it was the June meeting, the June 14th meeting, where there was a presentation in the public speaking part, where a representative from the union presented a list of items that they thought were important to our district. And I want us to consider how we're going to address that in moving forward. Now, that's not something that we need to, or we can discuss it right now if we're ready, but I would like us to be thinking about that and be prepared to kind of talk about what that means and how we're going to look at that as we move forward. So I don't know if people are ready to discuss that now, or if that's something that people want to hold till we have the full finance meeting, the full update, finance update, next Without a roll call, and there's no, I don't know. But anyway, it looks like we're going to hold that discussion until our next meeting, but I want to be sure we get that discussion on our next full board meeting, where they do the update. So I want to be sure we get that back on our agenda for discussion. Thank you.
Does that make sense? Does that work? All right.
Just to clarify, though, it doesn't mean that we're getting any more money. It just is the timing. It's just, I mean, just to be clear. I don't know if it's not clear.
For that piece, for those $2 million, but there's still a surplus from the year. And we knew that when we agreed to hire the instructional coaches, that we thought we were tracking that way. That's why I think it was important to get at least some kind of flash to make sure that what we thought was going on, when we made that decision, indeed actually came to fruition, and it did. And Chris will get into that. I think Margaret's question is more of, as we move to budget for this coming year, resource allocation.
Correct. And just so that we're clear, there's three elements that we just talked about, though. One is, what we always do is, what's our budget? What are we going to do with it? Second is, we know that we were having a -- or it was looking like we were going to have a surplus, therefore, we asked the administration, "What would you do with that?" That's why we said yes to the instructional coaches. And then two, the $2 million or roughly, is just a timing issue. It's no more new money.
Right. And that'll be reflected in the difference between the year-end report that Chris will give, and then the budget report that he'll give for this fiscal year.
Because we talked about three different things, and people can tie them together, and they're not necessarily. So when we talk about their surplus, we're not saying there's $2 million surplus. They're not together. You see, I just want people to be clear.
And I don't know if that point was confused, the fact that there was a surplus, and the fact that we had information that was presented to us before. As we're doing our budget, my request was to figure out how or if we're going to include those items into the budget. So that's my request.
And then there were two other items, one of which is stormwater, which is on the agenda for tonight, I think, as it pertains to Madison. It was a very brief update, but very quickly it was deferred to this discussion coming up. And then the other one had to do with facility rentals. Just real briefly, not to get in the minutia, a couple of years ago, Chris and I, and we worked together to try to improve the process for booking our facilities in order to improve the usage and the efficiencies, because it was happening particularly at York, was there were a lot of groups that were making demands, and some of them would take down a big chunk of space, but only use a part of it, and part of it would go unused. And we thought maybe there was a better way to do it. And the Park District gets all the adults in the room at one point in time, and has them work it out themselves. So we decided to try that model a couple of years ago, and it worked pretty well. This year, there's more users. There's a couple more athletic teams running around, and it didn't quite work as smoothly as the adults had a hard time getting along. And so I just want to give everybody a heads up, because I think, in general, coming out of that conversation, there were a lot of unhappy people that didn't get the space they wanted, that thought that they were deserving of it, to the point where there was, I think, an email circulated at one point in time that said that they were pulling donations to the district. And so if you guys get that kind of feedback, the issue is, we have a policy that's first come, first served at cost. It's not who gives the most money. Now, I mean, you could auction the space to the highest bidder, but that's not our policy. And so we've explained that to folks, and Chris and I sit in a meeting with Adrian, right, or we reiterate that we're not referees, and we're not breaking ties, and we're not picking favorites. You guys either figure it out, or we'll go back to the auctions, or the online lottery system, where you all show up and bid. So I don't know, I mean, some of these folks can be vocal in the community. I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood that we were adhering to a policy which was first come, first served at cost, regardless of how long you've used the facility, regardless of who you are, or whether you're in season, whether you're out of season. There were a lot of arguments that were made, and there may be a more efficient way to do it, and if there's a will of the board to look at that, we could talk about it, but I'm not so sure that's a can of worms we want to open. But you needed to be aware of that, just because this year particularly is acute, where I think a number of groups didn't get the time they wanted. And so you may hear about that. So that was it.
How did it work with having groups share a space? Where previously, one group would get a space, a large space, are they still working together to share a space? Like the Field House, or you know, that's an example.
Well, the Field House has been divided into four different regions. There's gym, you know, three different gyms. I think it's north, south, and center, or something like that. And then there's the track around it. So we have, that's been the last two years, where you're signing up for one of those four sections of the Field House, and that's still, that was the case.
So, yeah, so this year, they did end up working it out. We made some accommodations where I think we pointed them to some other spaces outside just of York. But I think Chris and I are talking about whether this process has become more cumbersome for the administration than the value it's creating.
And I want to clarify, maybe for people who are watching and aren't familiar with the process, you said it was first come, first served, but it's not exactly, I mean, like, the Park District gets a higher priority than, I mean, there's a ranking to it, right? The Park District gets first dibs, as opposed to like an outside sports team. So there is a bit of a, it's more complicated than just first come, first served.
Is it, Chris? It's obviously the district, then it's the Park District, then it's everybody else, right?
Yep.
And the everybody else is an online system where we open it up at 9:00 AM on a certain day of the week, and everybody goes online, and whoever reserves the space does it. I mean, it's incredibly inefficient from the standpoint, if you're planning a season, you have to piece together all the pieces, which is why we thought that the adults could work this out more efficiently. But if they're going to argue over it, then we're just going to go back to what we did.
Can you just, and I know there's a previous agreement, can you just remind for everyone why the Park District got first dibs, if you will?
We have an intergovernmental agreement with the Park District. Typically, in every school district I've been in, other taxing agencies that are public, you know, entities typically receive some type of priority, and depending on how the policy's written, in terms of being able to share each other's facilities, and that can vary. But in our particular case, we use tennis courts, we use freshman baseball field, we have various different things that we benefit from. And it's not always perfect by any means, because whether it's them or any other entity in town, we just don't have enough space for everybody that wants to use it. But they, in turn, then use our facilities for some of their summer programming, for some of their rec types of adult leagues later in the evenings, and a variety of other things. things.
I just want to, so you had the meeting where you all got in the room. That didn't work out. Has the online process happened yet, or no, that's coming up?
They ended up working it out at the meeting, but it was a lot more difficult than it had been, to the point where I think nobody got exactly what they wanted, and it may just be more efficient to go back to the old system, but that's a conversation that we're having.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item, Item A, from the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll do roll call vote.
I need someone to move.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, Item A.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, Item A.
I'll second that.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Jen. Okay. Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, and motion passes. Superintendent's communication. Go ahead.
Okay, so the first item is an item that we would like to bring forward to you for approval at the August 23rd meeting, and it's a proposal from White and Company to further support our Focus 205 work. And some of the next phases that we're going to be moving into are developing and sharing potential future concepts for facility enhancements for longer-term upgrades, and some of those potentially could be more larger in scope than, you know, typical maintenance types of projects. And so we will be soliciting extensive community input on those, but we need some support in developing those concepts. You know, we can come up with different schema of what different types of things can look like, but ultimately, there are intricacies involved with attaching costs to things and relative pros and cons, and nuances that require some professional consulting support. And so that's what that proposal from White and Company is. They have two steps in their part, is just to support in the planning process, and then the larger piece of money, larger cost. So the first step, not to exceed $20,000 to support the planning process. The second step is the one that would be more extensive with having to have more details and intricate specifics attached to various different concepts that would involve dollars and other types of, for example, if you do a certain project, it could be more than just a building. There can be a variety of different things associated with it that would have to come in play to get to actually the building, and all those kinds of things. And so that is a larger dollar amount that they're estimating could be in the range of between $50,000 and $100,000. We have not formally bid this. White has been our architect of record, so what we're doing is legal within the state provisions, but also allows us to more effectively and efficiently move through this planning process, because at this point, they have a lot more intimate knowledge of our actual facilities, because they've been involved in various work and various previous projects. That being said, at whatever point in time that we would move to any kind of potential large-scale project of any kind, the intent would be for us to bid that out.
Is that a fair synopsis?
So are we approving both Step 1, the $20,000, and then Step 2, which would be the higher dollar amount of $50,000 to $100,000 tonight?
No.
We would, we have the proposal included in your packet tonight, but we would put that on the agenda for approval on the 23rd.
You said that, I'm sorry. And that's both steps?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have projects in mind? Or how does this process work?
Well, we've been, we've begun some internal discussions on various different types of things that could be possible. But what we have to do is, we have to refine those and develop a way to present those to the public to try to determine what the public is interested in supporting potentially, and get additional feedback from them, and continue to refine them until we would get to the point where, you know, the board would feel comfortable eventually signing off on any one direction or the other. And so actually, this proposal here is to support kind of the next step of the Focus 205 project to help us, you know, get to that long-term facility concept.
So would it be fair to say that what we're engaging White to do here is develop some conceptual ideas to the point where a fairly reliable price tag could be put on them? And then mesh that with the 205, the Focus 205 process, and figure out what, which of these projects the community wants to support? Is that a fair statement?
Essentially, yes. Essentially, yes.
From Phase 1, we have, we had ideas from the community, so would that be part of the Step 1 district-wide planning process, using those ideas from the community?
Yes. The idea is that we don't want to look at this as just a bricks and mortar type of a thing. We want to develop a facility, a facility plan that supports what we want our educational process to look like. And so we would build off the work that we did this year, and then that would all, you know, work together.
No, I was just going to say thank you for that clarification, that any large projects would definitely be bid out in the process. That was a correct statement, right? Okay. And this is based off, this is just developing, as Jim explained, was just developing existing, or trying to develop information so we can understand what the cost may be. And that is why we're going back to our architecture, architect of choice. Okay.
So Dave, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, so just the money part of this and what we're committing to. So district-wide planning is a very defined, it's in here, it's what they're doing with 205, Focus 205. And then the second step is a TBD, basically. And so that's going to come back to us when a price tag actually gets determined and the scope is actually refined?
Well, they're giving you an estimate. It's a little bit different, it's a little bit difficult for them to be exactly specific of what that works going to entail until they know a little bit more detail how many different types of scenarios and concepts, and how intricate it's going to be to do the work to attach price tags to the various different things. You know, we could come up with concepts that we could float out there, but ultimately, the level of specificity and information that people need to intelligently decide, you know, which ones they feel most comfortable with, we need to get their expertise, essentially to put price tags to ideas.
Right. I guess my question is more around, I absolutely get that, and because we don't know this much today, it's hard to approve that second step yet. I mean, I think that we agree that, or I would personally agree that these are the right steps, but I think there's a checkpoint between Step 1 and Step 2, where we see what they did in Step 1 and what they're advising us to do on Step 2. I just think that's more effective for us to approve a Step 2 when there's more definition to it, rather than, for all the reasons you stated, do it today or next meeting. So I guess that would be my request, would be that we support Step 1, and we support taking Step 2 at the right time, caveated upon having that proposal shown to us. Or John may say that better than I did.
No, I'm just reading, and it says, "An updated proposal would be submitted following the conclusion of Step 1." So Step 1 sounds like it's a very conceptual, kind of abstract needs analysis approach, and coming up with concepts, with broad resource. It's, just reading through the proposal, but it says pretty clearly here, "An upstated proposal would be submitted following the conclusion of Step 1," and at that time, we can, should consider whether this is the firm, I mean, the firm does have a long history. There's a lot of background from the long relationship. They were the architect of record for York High School there, weren't they? The architect of record through the District 205 referendum, and all the projects that were done at the elementary and middle schools. And so this is, this is one of those professional services relationships that procurement laws by necessity give wide berth to allow a relationship to benefit the client.
Actually, John, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I guess I was looking at things from a bigger picture standpoint, and so Chris, your statement and Chris's question, I appreciate the clarification. We would write the motion consistent with this proposal, so you would be approving things and stages. And so that would satisfy, that would satisfy Chris's comment, and that's actually in the proposal itself. So I should have been more clear on that, and I probably was thinking in different ways than where I was not as clear about what we would actually be asking you to approve in two weeks.
Okay, next, on the superintendent's communications, Stormwater Project at Madison.
Okay, you have in your packet a letter from Greg Walter-Storf at V3, who has been the engineer that has provided us feedback on the plans that have been submitted for the Madison project. And we received 65% plans at one point, and the one concern we had had to do with some of the street work. And initially, at that point, we thought that that work was going to begin over the summer, and so Frank Schuh, our facilities director, had expressed that concern, and we had gotten assurances that that portion of the work would take place after the conclusion of summer school and wouldn't disrupt any of the educational activities over the summer. For whatever reason, I really don't know, this was pushed back, whether it was getting the final plans, their bidding process, whatever it was. So we received some updated plans, they still weren't final plans. That's what this letter is from. Then, about two weeks ago, or three weeks ago perhaps, we received the final plans. Greg was on vacation. He reviewed them, submitted another follow-up piece of recommendation that was identical to this, which is the concern that we have, and the only concern that we have about the project, to be honest with you, from our school district perspective, is the potential disruption of the traffic flow with pickup and drop-off in buses and the congestion if that street is torn up. Frank is going to work with the city directly, and we will establish some communication processes to make sure that our principal is always in the loop, and that communication can go out to families if necessary. I spoke with Jim Grabowski yesterday morning. He has assured me that the city is 100% committed to working this out. And a couple days ago, we received a letter, I think the day after the packet went out, where they have committed to doing that portion of the work on Saturdays or after school hours, and several other caveats about providing assistance directing traffic if necessary, and other things of that nature. So I really believe that while this is not ideal, that they are being sensitive to our concern and are committed to trying to work that out. So that's just an update, so that you know that we're very close to the work beginning over there at Madison. And I wanted you to be aware of where we're at, also be aware of our concern about the traffic, and the city's commitment to work with us to try to make sure that there is minimal, if no disruption of our actual operations.
You, just my question, you said that they would do that work after school hours and on weekends. What does the word "that" refer to?
There is a portion, they have to put, they have to put, they have to tear up the street in an area near the parking lot to help put some of the infrastructure in that drains the detention area.
The first one of these city projects was done a few blocks from my house. This involves large, heavy equipment, semi-trailer-sized dump trucks, digging thousands of yards, square yards of dirt out of the ground, loading it into those dump trucks. It's not quiet. It's extremely noisy, and it's going on within a few feet of the school, which our most vulnerable, most easily distracted children are in schooling. I think we should follow the advice of the consultant we hired and ask the city to do it when school is not in session, all the work, not just the street work. I mean, they can choose next summer, they can choose to do it at night on the weekends after school is out, but it's not quiet. And the street was ripped up for months.
Well, that's an option available to the board. We can request that. There's, you know, some potential, some potential for complications if we go that route, but we certainly, we certainly can, we can request that. I think even if they started the work this summer, they were never going to be completely completed with their work prior to the start of the school year. So there was always going to be some construction going on, I think, while school was in session. Our concern was the work that was being done close to the entrance and exit into the parking lot area.
I just think if we think that they can complete this work during school hours and not have it disrupt the quality of education that's going on in that building, we are at best naive, I really think we should follow the recommendation of the consultant we hired, and that is to ask the city to do it during non-school hours.
Well, if the board directs us that way, then that's, I mean, that's the board's decision, so we, that's...
Well, my impression from the letter was not that that was their recommendation. I think they were pointing out that that was just something that had been in the original agreement that, you know, was a differentiation. I don't think they were advising us on when the construction should happen, but I could be wrong. The other thing is, I mean, Madison goes to school, there's kids at school year-round almost. I mean, they have summer school, so there's not going to be a time, you know, you can't just say put it off till next... just say put it off till next summer because there'll be no kids, there's going to be kids there. I don't think we should say absolutely no way. I mean, maybe we could go to the city and find out if this project is at the same scale that the project by your house was at, just to the naked eye. It seems like that one was a much bigger one than this one. I don't know. I'd like to have a discussion. I don't want to sit here tonight and tell them, "No, forget it, you can't do this." This is a pretty important project.
I mean, the trucks are the same size. There may not be as many loads, but the trucks are the same size and they're just as noisy and they're right outside the classroom window.
But to say that the streets can be torn up or that the parking lot is going to be torn up for months, I don't know if that's, I'd like to have a conversation with the city about that.
The parking, there's no, there's no real impact on our actual property. The impact is that the work is being so done so close to the places where we have our pickup lanes and other things like that, that the traffic and the congestion, if the traffic flow is disrupted, could cause some inconveniences. But the work I'm talking about is not going to actually be on our property per se.
So can we just ask the city, as we work together, the original, every time that we've talked to them, it has been the least disruptive to education and our students at the buildings. And so can we just continue the discussions and have a plan of how is it exactly going to impact us and how are they going to help mitigate that? Because we, it will impact our parents who are dropping off and picking up. It's already congested. And so let's just, you know, work with the city to commit to what's the impact and how are they going to really help mitigate the issue for us? Because we're about education, not about handling traffic congestion, which is already at Madison, even though there's no new construction going on. So there is going to be issues. So can we just have the plan from the city, how it impacts us and how they're going to help us mitigate it?
Be clear, I mean, this is going on, on our land. I mean, they're digging up their streets, but they're also digging a giant hole in our property.
Well, I understand that. I'm talking about the portion of the project that we're concerned about that could impact the operations and the traffic flow. Obviously, the dual-use facility and the digging, I mean, is on our property. I'm not trying to suggest that. I'm talking about the portion of the work that concerns us related to the street work being proximal to where we have drop-off and pickup in buses, et cetera. That's all I meant by that statement.
Is there any other comment? Go ahead, John.
It's times like that we rely on the professionals. And I guess I see this letter from Greg saying, "Change the construction schedule." And so I'm not sure if he's telling us it's too loud and disruptive, which is what Jim's concerned with. What I see in the modifications and clarifications is an attempt to deal with the traffic impact of the sewer work affecting the ability to move around the neighborhood. And those are two different things. And I didn't think about it until now, those are two different things. You can make changes in the staging of a sewer job to make sure there's no disruptions in traffic flow. But once you go and start construction on this project and the principal says it's adversely impacting, what are our options there? Ask them to shut down the job? I just, I'm concerned more with that disruptiveness than the traffic. Traffic, I think, can be adjusted, the sewer job can be phased in such a way it can be done in off times or parts of it can be done in off times. But the disruptiveness of the noise and the things going on there, once we go down that road, there's not much you can do. You have to move X, and I think it's probably more hundreds of yards, Jim, but thousands. Thank you.
Well, I, we can, I mean, we can go back and ask our attorneys to have, you know, further conversations about this or however you want to direct us to proceed, but I don't think we were ever going to have this project transpire realistically without there being a detrimental impact for a period of time to what's going on at that school.
Right.
Which is, I think, the point Emily was trying to make, which...
I guess what I'd say is, we provided a window to the city. Maybe it was a narrow window and it was going to spill in both directions, a little early and a little late, but there was a window and it appears that what this is saying, starting in September, is a complete miss on the window. I guess the thing that I'd do is I'd turn back to the city and say, "What assurances can you give this, that this, give us that this will not totally disrupt the activities of the school?" And ask them for some assurance and have that conversation through our retained professional, Greg, the engineer, who can interpret and let us know. I mean, it's kind of a scary thing to say, "Oh, go ahead," and then we find out day one, you know, it's a disaster. Or it could go smoothly, it could work. We just don't know. What assurances can we get from the city, I guess I'd look for. And again, I'm thinking about this differently than I was earlier.
And I understand the request about going to the city. I guess, can we get clarification from our objective professional, this V3 company, on what their thoughts were, what their current thoughts are now, the impact on what the September project plan would look like? What are their thoughts? They reviewed our engineering, the engineering plans before. They had recommendations. They made modifications. I don't know if they've reviewed it since the modifications and what their thoughts are based off the modifications made.
They reviewed the final plans and the feedback is the same. I believe that because we were very clear with Greg, that our concern had to do with the tearing up of the street. And I can get clarification from him in writing if that's what you would like, but I believe that his statements are more directed toward that aspect of things because of what we told him about that being our primary concern. Because we really haven't expressed a lot of concerns about any of the other aspect of the plans other than that.
Okay, so then, thank you for that. So then our clarification with Greg might be, obviously, our concern of tearing up the streets, but also the impact, potential impact to the, to the school environment. And get some clarification on his professional opinion on that. And then we can make a more educated decision on how we want to move forward.
So before we have the attorneys meet, I mean, let's, can you have a conversation with the city, please? That's what I'd like to come to an agreement on. And also, I mean, if you've driven around town, there's been all kinds of construction going on in the streets for the sewer and I don't understand the engineering of it. But for example, at Jackson, I know that the city communicated with the principal because as parents, we got emails regularly about what streets were going to be closed, where the construction was, what was happening. And it was, it was pretty major construction and there was constant communication. I'd like that kind of communication to happen. I don't want this project to completely stop because there was, you know, one hiccup. I think we can communicate, we have communicated, and that's what I would like to happen from here on out. And I also wanted to ask, what the email that we got from you before this meeting was something about this project, wasn't it? Wasn't it some kind of assurances that work would stop and there would be temporary ramps so as not to disrupt traffic? I mean, I think there's more of an update to this than we've discussed tonight, is that correct?
Well, the most recent information that came in a couple of days ago, which I did not have a chance to preview in detail, that came from the city, was their attempt to be responsive to our concerns. And it lists nine different things in here that they are going to commit to, one of which is doing the sewer work on Saturdays or days when school's not in session. One is making sure there's temporary access if necessary, providing people to direct traffic if necessary, committing that certain streets would never be closed, you know, when school's in session.
Right.
There's a whole...
Right, the intersections, major intersections would be closed only on a Saturday. I mean, I feel like that a lot of these concerns we have have been addressed.
I would agree. I mean, the noise from the construction, I mean, I, but I think that they're doing everything possible to address our concern about the traffic, which going back several months was the only thing we told them when we started getting the plans that was a concern of ours, related to the plans.
See, I think when Frank got the plans, his immediate concern was the sewers around the school and the parking lots. He said to me, he wasn't as concerned about the digging of the hole in the soccer field as he didn't think that that would be as disruptive. But I'm not sure if Greg, the engineer, or the city, how disruptive that digging of the hole is going to be to Madison. But Frank's initial concern was about the areas closer to the school, the sidewalks, the parking lot, the entrances, the driveways. And I think the city has addressed Frank's concerns about those areas. But we didn't present to the city any concerns about the digging of the hole that's the soccer field that's a little further away from the building. So...
I think we're discussing this now because it's, would start September 20th or, you know, whatever the date is versus, you know, June 10th. So it's a little, the timeframe has shifted.
As I said before, everything in the modification, the clarification, deals with those access issues that are raised by the sewers. The only question I have is about the disruption of the earth moving for the area south. And that's not something I don't think the board can answer. I think that's a question that has to be answered by the people with information, which is, number one, people who know the building and how the building operates, and the people talking to the people who know how the construction project will go. And if there's confidence in the administration that it will not be unreasonably disruptive, everybody knows there will be noise, there will be sound, there will be attractive big machines in front of three and five-year-olds. Even us older kids enjoy watching those big machines sometimes. But if the administration can comfortably say they do not believe it's going to be unreasonably disruptive, then I'd be willing to go along with that. The only problem is, and the concern that I have, is that you can't shut off a construction project except very expensively. And we don't want to put anyone in that position.
All right, I'll try to get as much information as I can to address the issue about the, I'll talk to Frank, talk to Greg, and try to get, and the city, you know, when necessary, where necessary, whatever. But try to get information back to you that gives you a clearer picture of the potential for the disruption related to the actual digging and that type of work, and potential impact on the school day. Quite frankly, that's a little bit of a tough one because I'm sure there's going to be some, and I'm sure it's going to be a little bit difficult to be able to quantify exactly what that means or is going to mean. So I'm not sure exactly what I'm going to be able to come up with, but I'll do my best to try to provide some clarity.
Are you asking him to, like, stop forward progress while he figures this out or is everything moving forward as planned?
Well, I understand, there's no start date until September 26? Okay, so...
I mean, I think a few things are going to happen between now and September 26. That's what I'm saying. Is that preparation going to stop or does that keep going?
Well, I, again, since I don't know the process, I would see, it would seem like the process could continue. I would hope that we could get a response from Greg by perhaps our next meeting. If we have that date by our next meeting, we'll know. We'll have an idea of what that impact looks like. Is it a half a day? Is it, is it four weeks? And those are extremes of disruption. We'll have a better understanding then we can make a decision based off that. But in the interim, it seems like things move forward.
What was the original start date that they told us that they missed?
I don't know that we ever got a specific date on the original plans. What we were told was that they wanted to, the phrase that they've used is shovels in the ground in June. So we were expecting a summer timeline. And when we saw the plans, our first goal was to try to make sure that we didn't disrupt the summer school programming. I don't know if there was ever an exact date given, but I think they were initially planning to do, start some of the work this summer. And I don't know why it's gotten pushed back exactly.
Just one last thing, because I'm dealing with this in what I do for a living and we're building movie theaters in big construction zones. And I think what the question is, is there are various levels of disruption for certain activities. So there's, so within the leases that I've negotiated, we've precluded things like pile driving during business hours. It's not, I mean, disruption is going to be defined by the activity. So, you know, whether it's jackhammering or this or that, and I think some of that's in that letter. I think what we're asking is, is for our consultant to identify the most disruptive activities and find out if we can get those scheduled in nights and weekends. And not saying we shut the thing down, but just saying that the lesser disruptive activities can happen during the day. But I think that that's the way you have to ask the question, is get advice from our folks to say, "What are the things that are the most, the activities that are most disruptive to the classroom environment during the day and can we schedule those at a different time?" I think that's, is that not the question we're asking?
Well, the letter says, "Contractors shall coordinate the storm sewer installation and the concrete apron sidewalk replacement with the engineer, city, and the school to minimize disruption to the students slash parents." So are we asking them for more details? Are we asking if they really mean that? I mean, what are we asking?
I'm taking this to mean you want further clarification of, for lack of a better word, what this means in terms of digging the hole. I mean, they've tried to outline what they're going to try to do related to the sewer work on the street close to the, closer to the school. So I am taking this to mean that you want some clarification as to what the other part of the project may impact and how we could work around that. Am I not understanding that correctly?
But is it not enough that the city's going to work with Dave, with the administration, with the school? I mean, do they really need to come back to us and tell us which classrooms are on this wall, window facing, and how loud the digging of the hole is going to be? And I just feel like we are micromanaging this and that assurances have already been made, the date has been set, and that we should trust these guys to work together. And I feel like we have everything we need and that we should give them the power just to keep moving forward with this project.
But exactly when it doesn't work out as promised is our recourse.
We have an entire agreement with them that has, you know, recourse for if stuff doesn't work out.
They had an agreement with us that said they'd start in July. And look how that turned out.
Okay, so we had our first hiccup. Do you want to cancel the whole deal? I mean, is this what we're asking them to do? We've got... We, we've gotten reassurances. I feel like, why are we going to stop this? Because we're worried about the dirt that's going to get dug up. I, whenever I entered into this agreement, I assumed that there would be construction going on because school happens almost year-round at Madison while school was going on. I'm just asking, why, what reassurances do you need more than what you have? Or what legal recourse do you need more than what's in the agreement with them?
Emily, when you have several classrooms that the noise is so loud that the kids can't hear the teachers, that when the kids go out for recess, I, you know, that they're so close to the heavy equipment that's driving back and forth, that, that somebody feels there's some danger. I, I just want to know what the recourse is.
Now you're bringing up danger to the kids? This agreement says they will work with the school to make sure that it is at the least disruptive time for students. So yes, if you tell me a kid's going to get injured by equipment, I'm going to say, "Oh yeah, let's stop it." But this, I think you're way off course.
Okay. So, and I think the way to resolve this, and again, Emily, I understand, we're not asking to stop this progress, and we're not asking for specifics such as, on the left side in room 101, what's the impact? What we're trying to understand, I think, I thought Chris outlined it pretty well, was what was the level of impact and how will they minimize that? And we're asking not the city, who has a subjective view. We're asking our engineers, who should have an objective view, to understand the engineering plan and be able to give us some type of additional reassurances. I think that's, that's what we're asking. Not to stop it, not to go back over anything that was already decided. It's just trying to get a question that wasn't initially phrased when we talked about disruption, to get that question answered.
It's about the, the excavation part that we did not ask about before, which now, because of the timeframe, we, we just need some more information. Okay. Okay. We're moving on to board communication. Are there any board communications tonight? Margaret?
I have one board communication. We had, got an email from the foundation, and they were asking that the board could, if the board could be more interactive in their meetings. What that means specifically is they have a meeting once a month, I believe, if there is a board member who could attend the foundation meetings once a month. In addition, they also have events, and if possible, could a board member attend those, those events? So that was a request from the District 205 Foundation. Their first meeting is tomorrow, and I know that's a very short timeframe. And I, I spoke with Lisa Finelli, and I, I shared that the first time we would have the opportunity to bring this up and discuss it was tonight, and that tomorrow was probably not a good timeframe for us to make, make adjustments to any schedules if we decide we're going to move forward with this. So the question on the floor, a board liaison or liaisons floating for the foundation meetings, to make sure we are involved and connected.
It was two meetings per month? Like, one social or one?
There, it's not, there is one formal meeting a month. They also have events. It's not once a month. The events are not once a month. I can pull up, I can pull up the exact agenda, but that's what we're looking for.
They have the gala, they have the top pizza, they have the Wizards event, and they're trying to do some socials to cultivate some, some support throughout the year. I'm, I'm thinking those would be, at the most, three to four times a year. So, but their, their meetings are once a month. And the big events are really no different than what you are used to. They, they are trying to do some new and different things, which they'll do every year, I'm sure. But, but the meeting is, the, I guess it would be the second Wednesday of every month. That's, that's the actual meeting.
Margaret, are they looking for a single board member to essentially join their board? Or... Okay.
No, they're, yeah. They are, they are not looking for a board member to join their board. What they are, are asking is that there be more interaction with the board, similar to as we go to, we have a revol, well, we have a revolving meeting with the PTA Council.
Well, that was exactly going to be my suggestion.
Yes.
Would they be supportive of, and would this board be supportive of, a similar schedule as we, we handle meetings with the PTA Council?
They would be supportive of that. And so the question is, will the board, is the board supportive of that idea?
Yeah. Personally, I think that's a fine idea.
Yeah.
At least once, yeah.
Yeah. So the ideal, you're right. If we do it rotating with seven people, a few people would make it twice a year. Mostly, it would be once a year, if we move forward with that.
I mean, I agree. That's what I was going to suggest as well.
I can follow up with Lisa and Ellen?
Yeah. If there, and because of the short timeframe, I will, I can do another one, but I'll take tomorrow's meeting and just attend that one. And Ella can still, Ella can still put me on the schedule, but I'll, I'll just take tomorrow's meeting, since I did have some advance notice of it.
I was reminded of this, and maybe I missed something. When our principals invited us to come see pies in action in their schools, I, I haven't seen anything on our board liaison program to the schools. Did I miss something, or...
No, I didn't see it either.
Because last week, when we, we had our special closed session, we're revising our board norms, so that's why there's, we haven't seen the board liaison assignments yet, because we're, I'm preparing a draft of an update to the board norms, which would govern our agreements on how we work with the staff and employees. So we're, I need to get an updated draft of that out, and then that should follow soon after. After we agree on the final, you know, the, the latest version. Okay. Are there any other questions on that? Any other board communications? Go ahead.
Just real quick, tomorrow night's the SACID Governing Board, which I, as a board member, will sit on. And we will be following through with the delegations necessary to implement the two board solution that we voted on last spring. Tomorrow also will be approval of the budget, so I'm hoping to have a conversation with Dr. Kostek and get input of the staff regarding the budget. There are only limited parts of it that impact our district because we selectively use their services. If anyone's interested, I'm willing to share information with you.
Is that the first meeting of the governing board?
Right. We're implementing everything to split into the two boards. The, the governing board is the board of board, board of board members that handles budget and large things. And the delegation will be more of those, more detailed things to the Board of Control, which is made up of the administrations of the different members of the SACID Cooperative.
Any other board communications? Okay. We have upcoming meetings, Tuesday, I guess, 23rd, Board of Education meeting, 7:30. Tuesday, September 13th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30. We reached the end of the agenda. I declare the meeting adjourned.